I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary to note, roll call.
Join absolutely exclusive Dave B. of all.
Okay, the best part of the meeting, we have some students to honor. So I am going to first ask Easton, is it Peisler or Peisler? Peisler, okay, please come up with your family. I think you did too.
Yes, I think he won too.
All right, well, Easton, this certificate is for you. And I'm gonna read what your teachers wrote about you and why they nominated you for this award, okay? So you hold that. It says, "Easton is more than deserving of being this month's student of the month. Easton comes to class every day with a smile on her face and a desire to learn. She is dedicated to being the best version of herself and puts a great amount of effort into everything she does. Responsible and respectful are two words that describe Easton and her character. Easton is supportive and collaborative with her peers, which makes her a great role model in class. She is a positive influence on others and is always willing to lend a helping hand to a classmate. Easton is compassionate and kind. She is there for others who need a friend and is dependable and reliable. Her compassionate personality makes her classmates feel appreciated and acknowledged. An example of Easton's willingness to help others was when Easton took time out of lunch to help a lower level student finish his writing. Easton made sure to not give the student the exact sound of his words, but prompted him to use what he had learned in class, to sound out his words and turn his sounds into letters. The three first grade teachers agree that having Easton in the classroom is like having a teacher's assistant in the classroom at all times. She's truly a joy to have in class and we are fortunate and blessed that she is a student at El Goma Elementary School."
Congratulations. We might have a future teacher in here.
You want me in the picture?
Really, really good picture.
You don't want to be in the picture? I'm gonna sneak in the picture too.
Nice job, Easton. And we have another bright spot of the month, and this certificate is awarded to Anders Konkow. Come on up. Family, please, yeah?
There you go. I have lots of good things to say about this student. I'll let all the bad stuff come out of there, right? All right. Anders is the El Goma High School bright spot for the month of November. He was selected by the social studies department for his participation and excellence in the social studies seminar, specifically for his act in Ngolo, a life simulation game that has participates in at the end of each one. Anders demonstrates an assortment of organizational leadership skills that make him an effective agent of change in the game's government and economy. Anders is running the government of second hour, distributing food and energy, collecting taxes, and creating a structure to create and pass bills into law with quick decision making and the ability to delegate his authority to others in order to get things done. His social studies skills go well beyond the classroom level, how Anders has become a critically thinking member of society.
Already is, it sounds like, future politician. All right.
Very persuasive.
All right.
I watch it in action on a daily basis.
Congratulations.
Can we get a picture? Shoes? Supposed to have this open or something?
Well, it proves you won.
One, two, three. That is perfect.
All right.
Make sure you feel like your brother.
All right, thank you, and congratulations again to our honorees. So our next agenda item under special presentations is community youth advocate introduction.
I was gonna have Amanda Tweedy come tonight. She has some kids, this is their basketball game, we're gonna organize for January.
January, okay, well, defer that.
Obviously, if you're from the community, lots of people know Amanda. She's on board in our second week already, third? Yeah, something like that.
Amanda, last name?
Tweedy.
Tweedy, okay, well, we'll look forward, we'll look forward to meeting her in person.
Welcome to our board.
Good. All right, well, then we'll move on to you, Pat, board correspondent report.
Okay, um, there's a, not a huge, but there's a number of dyslexia bills being introduced. One of them would be a bill that requires the Department of Public Instruction to adopt an online dyslexia awareness training. Another one would be the bill requires a school, a school board to develop or adopt a program to identify and address pupils with dyslexia. Now, address pupils with dyslexia, what, you know, what, it's so vague, it hasn't been defined, and of course, it's most likely going to be an unfunded mandate, we'll see where that goes. It would also require the CISA's to employ a dyslexia specialist.
Great.
Yeah, so we'll see, you know, we'll see where that goes. I found this one interesting, there's a bill to increase penalties for harassment of sports officials. I mean, if anybody's been to any sporting official, sporting events, you can, you know that they take a brunt, a lot of, a lot of flak. And the, and WI is actually asking for this because they're trying to improve their environment because they can't get people to, to be officials.
I believe that.
And I, you know, I can understand, if you've been to a game, I can understand that some people are pretty vicious. I didn't realize this, but now, right now, it's a class B forfeiture if a person is found harassing an official, intimidate, strike, shoves, kicks. The bill could possibly pose a penalty of up to forty hours of community service if this changes, as well as other penalties associated with the crime, and it may require the violator to participate in counseling, including anger management or abusive behavior intervention at the violator's expense.
I like that.
So we'll see where, where, I have my, I don't like to see, you know, a law get put in, I'd rather have the districts address it themselves by saying, "You, you're out." That's where I'm coming, that's how I would rather see it, but we'll see what happens with this. The Democrats in the state legislature introducing four bills for accountability legislation on the voucher program. So we'll see where that kind of goes. Per pupil payments to private schools is one of them. On the average, a student who attends a public schools receives twenty-six hundred dollars less in general aid than, than the voucher programs. And then, you know, the, the districts have to make up, the taxpayers have to make up that difference. So they're looking at, at addressing that issue. They're also looking at teacher licensure. That right now, if you're in a private parochial school, you don't have to be licensed by the DPI. So this is saying that if you're getting taxpayer money, then you should be, your teacher should be licensed by the DPI. And there's another one limiting enrollment in the parental choice program. You know, that's been, we've been talking about that for a while, and we'll see where that, I don't, see where that goes. This one I found very interesting, when school districts have to, they want to, you know, to keep their doors open, they don't have the funds, you have to go to referendum and the taxpayers get to, to vote on yes or no if they want the funds. But when the money comes out of your district to, for a voucher program, there's no say to the taxpayers. So what this one would, actually would do would be, would just, no funds can be taken, put up to referendum. No funds can be taken from a school district to pay voucher schools unless voters in that district approve it in a referendum.
I think that's only fair, it's taxpayer money.
Well, now, you remember, it's not, this is not a bipartisan, this was, this was introduced by the Democrats, so we'll see how far, how far that goes. On, 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 on note, you, we talked about the other day, you said you had a forty-six million dollars, was it last year or when?
It's a study done by Diane Ravitch, from '06 to '14. And it's just a study on the impact of private schools in the state of Wisconsin, and the number of them that they were never opened or opened and then closed, almost forty-six point eight million dollars.
Of expenditure?
Of money given to those entities that was never, never, you know, found for.
Wow, this went in somebody's pocket.
Right, so weren't you?
The nice part about it is it's an actual list, you can just look at all the places. I have it, it's on my desk, that's why.
Interesting.
You know, you talked about accountability.
Yeah, exactly.
Let's have some accountability. And then the other thing, you know, we've had a recent rash of school incidents, violent incidents in state Wisconsin. And so Tony Evers is calling for state funding for mental health services at the schools, for more state funding. He said the schools won't be, school violence won't be solved by only increasing punishments for students. We have to have people trained, such as counselors, interacting with students. So, you know, to me, in my, in my mind, that is what we've hired Amanda for. So, and then the, the next one is a bipartisan legislation. There's gonna be a pilot program in O'Connell County. O'County counties to receive, the schools in O'Connell County are gonna receive mental health consultation services from the Medical College of Wisconsin. So I think if they're gonna pilot it in O'Connell County, or Autagame County, Autagame, sorry, Autagame County, that's a start. So I hope it goes well and they, we can expand it statewide, so.
Excellent. So going back to your very first thing about the dyslexia. I would assume that that is something that we try to identify in our students with some of our early screening and everything? Well, sure, but I mean, it, it's something that we work on and are aware of and, and create learning plans. I mean, I, I don't love having a lot of direction in terms of requirements, especially unfunded ones. I like local control on it, but if maybe it would allow for additional resources ultimately, that might be a good thing.
Well, maybe.
Maybe.
It's either, it's either going to be, probably won't cost the districts much, or it's gonna cost the districts a lot of money, depending upon what they, how they define address.
Right, I agree, true. But dyslexia is definitely a learning issue, so. Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll keep moving. Mick, CISA.
Pretty short, this, CISA sent out a survey to all the CISA seven districts, and twenty of them replied wanting to know what their districts were most interested in, and the top three, three were a homeschool return program to get kids back in, virtual dual credit college courses, we're pretty much on that one, and a virtual program for those kids who were suspended or expelled. So that came out of the top three of the twenty districts that, that replied to the survey. So it's something now we gotta take a look at and see what we can do to address that.
Okay. Citizens delegation to be heard, no one signed?
Well, we have a little presentation for later, she didn't sign in for us to speak.
So it'll be later in the agenda, okay, well, thank you for signing in. Okay, student representative report, Colleen.
This past Friday, a El Goma tour was held. Over twenty youth presented and demonstrated different things, such as the English Core Class, Wolf Den, Leadership Through High Adventure, and many other bright spots in their school. They talked one-on-one with the attendees and had an active role in the showcase. The attendees were very impressed with the initiative and drive our students have. The dinner concert was held this past Saturday as a fundraiser for the band and choir students, and it was very successful with over three hundred sixty tickets sold. The boys and girls basketball teams each have two games this week, with games at home today, Thursday, and Friday. Also this Friday, the student council is putting on the movie A Christmas Story as a good way to end the school day by allowing students to online for the holiday break.
Excellent. Questions for Colleen? All right, thank you. As far as board president announcements, I guess I am bringing this topic up, but it's just continually reinforced in terms of the leadership of the youth in our world. And that's a wonderful thing. This generation of our youth is obviously very active and very aware and very involved. And that just reminds us that our role in giving them the tools they need is that much more important, so. And beyond that, I'd like to wish everybody in the school district a very happy holiday season and a new year full of joy and love and comfort and family. All right, moving on to administration reports.
I think the Wawa Center update, I think snuck up on all of us, so I can say that on Friday, many of our conversations happened in the Wawa Center. Just kind of amazing, all the people that are utilizing that space and the wonderful things that they have to say about it, so. I think we're rest assured that lots of great things are happening in the Wawa Center, continuing to happen in the Wawa Center. PAC, Saturday, December twenty-first, Big Mouth and the Power Tool Horns, seven P M. Featuring the El Goma High School Band. Tickets will be twelve bucks, and they can be purchased online at theelgomapac.com. I have one item on my thing, but I think it's this broader conversation of doing what matters in our district. On Friday, that was basically the theme of our tour. When we invited people in, I think we wanted to, A, be transparent about the work that we do, but also letting them know that really, from the school board on down, doing what matters is, is our priority. And sometimes that flies in the face of state testing and things like that. But I can tell you almost to the person that attended, that's what they appreciated the most. They routinely asked me lots of questions about how we do this and how we do that, and how can you get the latitude to do this? And I think it's just a great example of a unified approach from the school board on down and really focusing on making sure that all of our kids have what they need to be successful. So my doing what matters report is, I'm working with Teal, she's gonna put her kind of graphic expertise there, and I'm going to, I have it written already, just a one pager on the front explaining basically our position, of why we do what matters, and how we define success in our school district. So on that backside of that one pager, these are just a few things that will be included, but every single year, Ju and I give you guys a sheet of paper that illustrates where all of our graduates are going. The one thing that maybe you remember from it is that mid-ninety percent of our students are getting some type of post-secondary training. And if they're not doing that, they already have a job, they're already set up in a career, or they're going to the military. So I think that is, you know, an illustration of all the hard work that goes into that, and our kids are set up to be successful. I think our fiscal responsibility as a school district to our community is something that really matters, because it allows us to give the students what they need. I think Special Ed is a great example. If we weren't good stewards of the money that we are given, I think we would really struggle. There aren't a lot of school districts that have grade levels of thirty-plus percent special education students, and certainly not a lot of school districts around us that struggle with some of the challenges that we have in terms of poverty and where our kids need to be successful. So I also don't think that schools around can talk about the power of partnerships. I think we have a laundry list of partners that are from a state to a national, to an international level that is really great when our kids can talk to students from other country, from other states, and they get to work on things together. I think our student achievements, you can look at our graduates, obviously, we talked about some more than others, but when they go to college and they enter as a junior, we're doing things that matter to kids. We create programs that matter, and they get results, to the tune of, I think I wrote down seventeen of them we highlighted on Friday. So seventeen programs that have a unique and distinct and intentional approach for our students. I also think that we like to be disruptive, and although it sometimes is a pain in the you-know-what for people, we like to push the envelope on how we do things in pursuit of doing things better. And that's, I think, a credit to the culture that we have. I also think that some of the new things that we're doing with our community youth advocate, setting up care teams and having a task force that can identify students and the needs that they have from multiple institutions, not just education is something that benefits our children greatly. I think we will, like Mick said, continue to offer the academic opportunities, whether it's dual credit. Certainly, we have to get over the bump of the Higher Learning Commission and whether or not they're gonna let high school teachers teach these courses, but I see movement there to develop new programs and how, I don't want to say get around that, but make sure that our kids all continue to have those forty-some classes where they can get dual credit. I think about Wolf Tech and the story that was on the radio the other day about just the growth of Wolf Tech long, even the growth of Wolf Tech outside of the packet. To have a student-run business, you know, make six-figure revenue in a year, I think is really impressive. And it's why we can have really nice stuff, and our kids get to work on cutting-edge technology. So I, my intent is to give a little narrative about where we are as a school district, certainly embrace that. I'm not dismissing the school report card by any means, but I also want people to understand that measuring success comes in a lot of different ways. And I think Joanne will talk about it later on in, with her work specifically, and the efforts that we have put forward with understanding what our kids need on a, on a social level and how that benefits them long-term in their educational career. So those are some of the disruptive things that we didn't know we were gonna find out, but I think we are, you know, certainly pleasantly surprised, and I think at the end of the day, when you have people come to your school district, and there are a lot of people crying on Friday because they couldn't necessarily believe what was happening right in front of them. And I don't know that I did a lot of talking, I don't know that any adult did a lot of talking on Friday. Our kids did a lot of talking, and our kids talked about the impact of the programs that they're involved in, from, you know, Community Kitchen where you have, I don't know those two ladies, but how amazing, you know, two ladies probably in their eighties.
There were ten, there's ten ladies that come after their exercise classes, and they do, like, create smoothies. This day, they're making, like, power ball snacks or whatever, but I had two of them stay just to kind of tell us their insights from a community member perspective.
Yeah, and just the social connection that happens between high school students and members of our community, and how, I said at Wolf Den, the end was there, that it's just this sense that everybody here that works together will do anything for anybody so that they can be successful, and it's like Wolf Den is certainly a family, and Wolf Tech is a family, but there's also this greater sense of it's all one big family. And if somebody needs something, we get it for them, and we help them out, and when, you know, somebody else is down on their luck or whatever, we give them what they need, and we just look after one another, and I, people that don't live here, when they come to see that, they get that almost instantaneously. And I think that's what I'm trying to get on, one sheet of paper, but it's incredibly difficult to get that on one sheet of paper, so I'll certainly get it out to you guys before I send it out, but.
So this is what we're thinking of doing, a mailing, like a Wolf?
Be right after the first of the year.
Perfect.
Basically, doing what matters, report to our community.
Yeah, yeah, perfect.
I just give you an idea of what we're working on, it's in the process of trying to whittle it down to what, you know.
Well, I think some of the things you said tonight definitely are the essence of it, I think. I think, yeah, it's gonna be good.
I think it's really great.
It's gonna be great. Any comments or anything? Moving on to Katie, principals report.
All right, we, it's a very busy time of year for us at the elementary school this time of year. We have our winter concert on Friday during the day. All of our students four K through sixth grade will be participating. The fifth and sixth graders will perform their band pieces, a few band pieces, and then the choir will also be singing, because it's always good to have our elementary students see the hard work that they put in every day. The PTS is also hosting a bake sale during the event, so it should be a wonderful send-off to winter break. Holiday helpers, Jamie Robinson, once again spearheaded the community program to provide gifts for families in need. This year, she said that one hundred and sixteen children in the El Goma area were impacted through donations. That includes fifty-two families, all schools throughout El Goma. She said it's a new high number of students. Last year, I think she had said ninety-four children were impacted. They served children as young as three months and to as old as seventeen years old. Gifts were brought in from the caring tree at Denny's Super Value, the Methodist Church, Saint Mary's Church, Precision Machine, generous business donors, and then the stacking fundraiser that was held at the elementary school. They were able to fill, fulfill every gift wish this year. They raised just about fourteen hundred dollars. A group of fifth and sixth grade students then took those donations, they shopped for the remaining gifts at Target. The bus was donated from Durack Bus Company. They brought in everything from bikes, a dollhouse, an American doll, and even simple things like snow pants and fuzzy socks. The children asked for a specific wish, and they tried to get the exact item that the kids had asked for. She said she's always amazed at how teachers, parents, and the community members step forward to help. So a huge thank you to anyone who is involved in that initiative. It'll definitely bring some joy to many families throughout El Goma this year.
Yes.
Sixth grade ACP conferences are coming up in January. So our sixth graders have been working on putting together their presentations to highlight their learning styles, potential careers and interests. They'll be presenting those to their parents when they come in on those two days, so the sixteenth and the seventeenth. It'll be the evening of the sixteenth and then the morning of the seventeenth, which is also a staff development day.
Is this the second year or?
This is the third year.
Third year, where the students have been involved with presentations.
Yep.
I mean, I just think that's so perfect. I mean, it, it gets the whole conversation going, making sure the parents and the students are on the same track of what, what's happening. Yeah, I think that's wonderful.
My favorite part of the, my favorite part of watching the presentations is when the students present about their personal learning styles and how they learn best. Because I think oftentimes, parents either, you know, assume, or they think one thing, and maybe they don't realize, or even have that conversation at home. So it's just always an interesting conversation to overhear during the, during the conferences.
Yeah, that's excellent.
Another date, a couple dates that are on the calendar, coming up in February is our district early childhood development screening days. So that'll be February twenty. So that'll be February twentieth and the twenty-first. There'll be a lot more information coming out on that. That is for any two- to four-year-old, four-year-olds within the district that have not yet had a screening completed. The teachers and specialists come together. They do some language assessments, some fine and gross motor skill assessments, play social, emotional type of assessments. And it's just a really good opportunity to be proactive in the education of their students. And then lastly, I just wanted to mention staff. It was brought up in our PLC a couple of weeks ago on how we emphasize a lot on socially-emotional learning for students. And maybe we as adults are not necessarily as in tune with ourselves and our own socially-emotional learning styles and experiences. So we are going to try to make a conscious effort to incorporate more of that into our PLC structure, into some of our, like, when we get together as a staff, kind of leading with some activities that kind of open ourselves up to being ready to learn from each other and have those conversations, so.
Good.
I just wanted to check what one of the things you said, or I thought I heard you say, in the Holiday Helpers fundraiser, you said it's a new high of one hundred and sixteen?
Yes.
Children?
Yep.
And fifty-two families.
Fifty-two families, yeah.
Any other comments? Okay, all good things. Moving on, Business Managers Finance Bulletin Report.
Okay, we'll start with the Annual Financial Report. So this is from basically CLA, which was previously known as SHINK. So they were bought out about a year ago. This just came in the mail two days ago. You guys are free to look through it. If you have any questions, let me know. Really, the most important, this is the very last, this looks at the very last cover. They have a little bit of letter right here. These are our findings. So this is what they find that we need to work on or errors or commissions that we need to take care of. As you can see, prior to your audit findings, we had the preparation of annual financial report, segregation of duties, and segregation of duties grant management. For this year, we are down to just preparation of annual financial report. And my little statement about that is management believes the cost of additional staff time and training to prepare your long closing entries and reports owe its benefits to be received. So we would need to actually have an accountant on staff in order to do this. So I don't think we'll ever get to that. Basically, that will be one finding that I've never really read. But otherwise, that was the only finding that they had for this year's financials.
So some of your, so some of your plans and in practice, in terms of the segregation of duties has met their.
Yes, so met their requirements. We were able to show that we can separate the duties to their satisfaction that not one person has control of basically anything. The, just the stapled sheet is the management packet. So this is their, how do I say this? Their draft of what they see and what they think we're doing and what we're doing that kind of stuff. And the actual financial data is in the booklet. Those are the numbers. So the management letter is at least a little, you know, how do I say this? Written language, it's not just all numbers. So you can read that and see what they're, I'll talk about what they looked at, what they, you know, talked about, you know, to myself and my staff along with Jesse and that kind of thing. This is the book we're, we're doing as a district. No real big things in there, obviously, because those are just, you have the findings. Well, and then like I said, the booklet contains the numbers. There really is nothing that is a surprise that really looks in from here to here. But you'll be able to see two years' worth of financials in here. Next month, we will have OPEB study, which is definitely key benefits, which is for our Fund Seventy-Three. So that's our obligation. We will be basically in a good position with our OPEB. We have not needed to reach our OPEB in the probably last, I'll say, eight to ten years when fully funded. And we're definitely still in that position. So we will have that report next month and we'll be able to look through that. Next month, I will probably cover this a little bit more. So if you guys can bring this back, I just want to give you guys, give you guys a sense of what's up for us. So like I said, just received it two days ago. So we're back. School safety plan. So you guys have given a school safety plan in your packets. So this is a three-year plan. So obviously, we approved this in 2018. However, I need to be able to prove that I have given you guys a copy each year. So my way of doing that is by putting on an agenda and an action, saying that I have got it. Couple of things, there's some documents in here that need to be updated. So I keep a live copy and I actually have to update them every year to the state. So like our drills and that kind of stuff. So I actually send that every year in December to the state. This is the exact copy that was originally approved in 2018 with no modifications. So in 2020, will be our last year that we'll be able to use this. And then we basically start over to the state. So for December's meeting, for December's due date, I just certify that I presented this to you guys and then sent it out to the state with updated drills, contact information, all that kind of stuff.
Jason, define start over.
Find start over. So we did, when we did this, we actually had a review. I met with the city police department.
Yep.
Met with the county. We made agreements with the youth club, East Shore Industries, all that kind of stuff. So when we come back to our third year and we're starting the process, we basically do that all over again. So obviously, the blueprints, the, that kind of stuff isn't going to change. Well, plus there is an update, but really, that's the stuff to say. It's all the stuff that needs to be recertified, re-updated. We'll have to have an onsite security survey again, all that kind of stuff. So that we'll go through that. And that's what we'll do for that third year. So our 2020 year, we'll be good that year, but we'll also have to start the process because as soon as December of 2020 comes around, I need to have a new booklet, so.
Okay, since it's on your report, I think we'll entertain any discussion on that right now. As you said, maybe there'll be some editing things that we'll want to change on that, so.
And if you guys have some recommendations now, I'll just save them. And then like I said, before when we do it in 2020.
Okay.
I'll do them and.
All right, John.
I've got some, I've got some highlighted stuff I'll simply hand off to you. But most of, most of it has to do with updating the drills, the.
Oh, correct.
The staffing. One of the things I, I wanted to know is whether or not the folks who have CPR and AED training and that, those certifications are checked before we put in the next report.
So we actually do in-hoops, so yes, so we'll build a.
Right, and just kind of, you know, go over it. The actual plan itself, I think, is an excellent blueprint. But if we update the information and keep it current, we should be doing pretty well.
Yeah.
So that was, that was my recommendation I've got.
That'd be great, thank you.
These I can hand back to you.
Anybody else? I had a couple. Did you have something?
Your staff that.
Okay. Okay, I guess my first question was, I thought we only had to do this every three years. So you answered that. The other, the only other thing, on page forty-four, lockdown.
Is it or elementary?
I'm looking at the elementary. I guess I just was hoping that we could also just have like an asterisk or something referring to active shooter, page fifty-one, because I think lockdown isn't always the appropriate thing when there's an opportunity for, and it's sort of, the two things sort of go together. So if that's something we could look at. And then the only other big thing, and, and I'm hoping maybe, Jason, this is something we don't have to wait for three years, is that the new, the policy perspectives that just came out said that the new law in our state authorizes giving previous warning of state-required drills is no longer, I mean, is allowed now. We don't have to have the, without previous warning for all of these drills. And that's a new law. And I really think for, I'm really happy about that because I think the chances of almost traumatizing especially, especially young kids when we have no warning and suddenly it's this, this, and this, it can almost be more of a traumatic thing than a learning thing. So if we have the authority now to give previous warning, I would think, can we change that?
I can actually answer that briefly. I think as a district and as working with Nick and that kind of stuff, we have never done a drill that has not been, how do I say this? Considered carefully. We do not do a real full active shooter drill. We've never done one. Even the previous administrator didn't believe in, one, doing that type of stuff and two, doing it, you know, to scare kids or to.
Right.
Fight and, or to get them concerned. So we've never done a true, how do I say this? A true drill where we tried to make it real-life scary type of thing. We practiced the concepts and the movements, but we have never done something that would, I guess, be considered where we would need to even send out a, like a, a major letter saying that we're going to.
Okay.
Do a true active shooter drill. Now, that being said, we've done active shooter drills, we've done it with all students. So we've had the county in here, we've had the city in here a couple of times. So we've done active shooter drills. We prepare the students, I guess, by doing our normal drills and tweaking them. We still do a lot of the preparation, especially with staff and like I said, with bringing the city and the county and that type of thing. But we've never been in the, I guess, realm trying to scare students.
Do we have the opportunity to do a walkthrough followed by a drill? So that we do it very, a very calm, here's what we're looking at, here's why we're trying to do it, and here's what we do. And it's a very calm walkthrough. And the next time we do this, which will be in about a half hour, we're going to want you to move much more quickly as if it were happening so that they're able to understand what they need to do and be able to do it quickly.
We've definitely done that with staff, where we've covered, brought different staff in from different buildings and did stuff like that.
Right.
We have never done that with a student. I'm not opposed to it.
Well, I, I find that the more you, more often that you practice a drill, the more likely it is that that, that drill, that, that practice is going to take over when you really need it to.
Correct.
And I think that's the more important piece of it.
I mean, I, I think there's some opportunity for that with some of the consistent drills that we do. I would have to think about that more with any type of drill related to active shooter. Because one of my concerns, if we were to include students in that, is you're basically coaching. You're prime, you know? You know, there's, there's a lot of, so a lot of schools in the past have gone with a lot of like this Alice training and all that stuff. And there's actually just a really lengthy report done on that and how. It's like getting led through.
I was, I, active shooter is a very specific one. I was thinking more in terms of fire, tornado, things like that where you can, where you can identify.
Tornado drill, we actually do that.
Right.
Talk about this and go through it.
Yeah, and you're also able to identify weaknesses in your own plan.
Yeah.
Active shooter is such a wild card, anything can happen kind of thing. I, I don't know, you know, out of the lexicon of responses that are, you know, that are available to you, which one is the right one? And we've seen evidence that there's no one that always works.
So for fire, we do a block exists. So, you know, we have, we have the drill.
Right.
And it says you should go to door A. Well, if there, if it's blocked by fire, probably should go door A, you know? I mean, so yes, we do stuff like that.
Right, and, and those are the kind of things that I'm, I'm talking about.
I mean, the tornado stuff is, I think, is the perfect example. I mean, if you went to the elementary, even here, we talked about it, you know, for quite a long time before we actually do the tornado. Just because it's not, you know, like, we have to go where? Because it's not like, you know, get out of the building or it's like.
Right.
We have to go into the.
Why can't I watch it from the window?
Do this, you know, like.
Can I watch it from the window?
I think the last time that we did it, we had problems with flashlights or something. I mean, so we learned something new every time.
Sure, there's a reason for doing drills. You find your weaknesses and, and make.
And, you know, I always think about it for our students with special needs, like walking through that with them and having them prepared. And we can stage some things helps a bazillion times over. Because really, it gets them comfortable. Allows you to set up some language that they learn and respond to. And you eliminate the hysteria of the moment.
Right.
Good. Okay. Is that the end of your request then?
Nope, so I just got the Declaration of Cancesi is due the seventh, 2020. And then, at the, I mean, like, ten minutes before the board meetings, the council sent over basically a tentative plan for solar, just to take a look at. This week enough later on and an agenda and that type of thing. So I asked them for, to at least give us a little bit more information about it, what it would look like, what it would cost, rate even, just because solar is one that is new. And everyone understands boilers, everyone understands that type of thing, windows, roofs. Windows are pretty easy. Solar is, you know, new, it's becoming at least feasible now with the payback periods. The rebates are actually are in here now, so we know that's what we get for rebates. I do have them checking into other questions that we had during the building rounds, like batteries and winds and that type of thing, to see what that was, how that was playing to it or what would that be look like. So they're still working on that. But basically, this is just a little how the press, you can sort of read more. They go from year one through year thirty, which is the expectancy of solar panels. Obviously, probably like some more than others. Like I said, it actually puts El Goma's numbers to it. Includes our own electrical bills, our ups and downs, our valleys. So at least it's tailored to us now.
Okay.
So the discussion will come up later on, that type of thing. But everyone understands boiler, everyone understands windows, roofs. Solar's a little more new, I would say new. I think that is it.
Questions or comments? Okay. We will keep going. Special Ed Report and Pathfinder Update, Katie. And remember, try and speak up because this is.
For Special Ed, we had two new career professionals start in the last month and they have been absolutely wonderful. Everybody is very pleased and very impressed with the knowledge that they come in with and their flexibility to just take on whatever comes at them. So really great to have them on board. They had practice for the winter con. They had practice for the winter concert today, and we had a couple of kids on stage who've never been able to go on stage before, so we've got the right supports in place for them to participate with their peers, so it's been really cool to see that. Andrea's crochet club is donating shawls to the nursing home, so they've been hard at work the last month to get some of those done, to donate to some of the people in town. And then we had some kids go on a walking field trip to ring bells at a mobile gas station. They went with some of the Pathfinder kids to ring bells, and that was a real trip. They had a really good time. The Pathfinder, they are starting a self-defense class in January. We are bringing somebody in from Green Bay. I think they do five sessions, five one-hour sessions, so the kids are really excited about that. Buffalo is currently reading the book of the haunted, and the partnership with the library is still going strong, which is really great. And then we have some new students who are looking at doing some classes at the high school next year to try and transition their way back in. So for me, that's really exciting. That's kind of our whole vision of Pathfinder, is to just have it when they need it and when they feel ready to try some new things. So I think we've got two students in there next semester coming to try and take some classes at the high school.
Wonderful. Questions or comments? Okay, we'll keep going. The algoma monthly update, Teal.
Um, I'll go quick, really quick. If you want to go back, you want to go first.
All right, Joan.
She's got probably more than I do. I just wanted to give an update. We have the epic access for like approximately twenty-five students in the district, so starting small, of course, as we always do, for some quick wins, those students that have high care teams. Our school nurse is able to see their medical profile. There's, the access that we have is very similar to the access that she would already have in some way, shape, or form, but what this is first allowing us to do is that the primary care physician or identified members of the care team medically are able to send notes to Carrie. So Carrie is actually identified on their medical care plans, the parents or guardians know of this, so it's one way that we can communicate. If this goes successful, when this goes successfully, then she will have access to then also initiate a conversation. So right now, she can have that conversation once it's initiated from them, but she will eventually be able to initiate a conversation on her end. So we're kind of going through a lot of the hoops with that, and of course, this is all brand new, so just trying to, you know, start small and figure that out first.
Would she be initiating the conversations directly with the primary care provider, or would she be going through the parent?
Primary care provider. Yep. So we have all, we've been working with legal healthcare providers, we have all of our forms filled out, parents and guardians are notified, they sign HIPAA forms just like they would, they know what access we have to doing this. We're really doing this in partnership with families, and with families that we coordinate a lot of care with, they have care plans for their health. So this is actually really benefiting our families, that they don't have to be middle managers trying to remember medical information and being that communicator.
Yeah, it was the initiating piece of it. I'm, I'm very familiar with the HIPAA laws and requirements and things like that.
Right now, the primary care physician can initiate to the nurse on these identified students.
Right.
Eventually, our school nurse will be able to communicate directly to them as we pass this first phase, so we're doing it in phases. Driver diagrams, I sent a packet in there, so excited about that. I just, all of our staff have worked with students, other stakeholders, I'm just absolutely tickled pink by their driver diagrams and what they, what matters to them and the things that they see from boots on the ground, and they're doing the work and they know what matters, so eventually we'll see that up on our board, and I know Barb, a year ago you had asked, wouldn't that be cool if our teachers and staff and students really saw themselves in our overall drivers? And I really think they do. Katie, Servie and I met with them, and they were able to share each other's driver diagrams, and, I mean, I think that our, we take for granted that our staff all work in this district, but they don't always know what each other are doing, and I think that was really valuable to have, to have them have that shared conversation. And if you look at this, I think that there's a lot of similarity and themes, which is also exciting, because that, I think, will help drive what Nick's talking about on the what matters report card of things that we're doing. So just wanted to throw that in there. I mean, these are, of course, we don't set any of this stuff in stone, this is workable at any moment, they can change it, so, you know, nothing has to be, you know, put on a brick wall and never changed for years, so I think that's important also. The Win Network, I threw in two articles that just had off the press, I'm excited about that. There'll be more as we work with the Win Network. They're really focusing on intergenerational wellbeing, stewardship, as Nick was describing before, so how we take care of each other. And I think that we, as a district, do a really great job addressing vital conditions, so the Win Network talks a lot about vital conditions, or maybe you could say social determinants of health, which mean like basic needs and safety, lifelong learning, reliable transportation, job opportunity. As I was going through, I think there's like seven vital conditions that we keep talking about at a national level. We hit six out of seven here, right in our school district, so I was very strategic. On Friday, we had the tour, I kind of outlined in our agenda. As you see this, we are addressing this vital condition, so all but housing, we don't really directly impact housing yet, because I feel that if no one else is going to do it, the algoma school district is going to find a way to impact housing, because it directly impacts our staffing and our families, and so that will be something I hope to see sometime in the future. Friday was amazing, there was lots of crying, I cannot say that enough, just, people cannot believe what they see when they come on tours. And we don't prep anything, all I do is run around just to make sure we have an agenda and people are in the right places, but what people are sharing, and it's not just students or staff, our community members, Zug Zastro, Corey Zimmerman, Renee Fullwiler, just even that alone was just amazing, how much that their work and involvement in the school to community is, is impacting their lives. The wellness center Nick was talking about, I mean, when we said people were coming, they all, the, the older ladies brought out the classics, sorry for on TV, but the classics brought out their little handmade directory and started calling everybody and said, we got to get at the wellness center, and, I mean, the place was booming and people were so proud, they were so proud to show off something that they feel is a definite asset to, to our community and themselves personally. I don't know, I could go on about the day, it was
Can you, can you just review for those who are listening or watching, who were, you know, what the attendee
Yes, I had to make a list, and Katie was trying to help me. So the initial ask was from foundations regionally, so we have regional foundations that want to commit what that looks like detail-wise, and we don't know, but they would like to commit for algoma to become a demonstration site in conjunction with the Win Network, which is a national organization. What they would commit to is probably more dollars or something to help with the resources that that would take. I don't have any other details, honestly, we have lots of phone calls coming up about what that would look like and what that means. One of the foundations, US Venture, and JJ Keller have funded Wolf Den. They've known our work for quite some time, even before Wolf Den, because of the Institute of Healthcare Improvement, well specifically a hundred million healthier lives, and they knew that we were a scaled community. So they've been following our work for, for a long time. That's the connection. They had asked us if they could come, and they wanted to bring other funders that they work with on a board called the Basic Needs Giving Partnership. So with, on Friday, who came was the Ash Cash Corporation Foundation, Theta Care Foundation, the Greater Green Bay Community Foundation, JJ Keller Foundation, the Ash Cash Area Community Foundation, and the US Venture Foundation. I might be missing one, Nick, do you know? And then there were other nonprofits that came with, I mean, like Wello, We All Rise, which is a culturally responsive counseling nonprofit in the Green Bay area, House of Hope, which Katie and I had the privilege of going to, they house young mothers that have domestic violence at home, just lots of various people that came, and they are all doing incredible work. So for them to come and to have that, that bit of response, I mean, Joan was there, she can talk about the response, it was, it was humbling to have that. My, Nick last week, but my favorite part was a lady that came up to Nick, and she was crying and said, I can, you are the best superintendent I have ever seen, and I'm being dramatic, but I'm not, it was a dramatic moment. But she, she was just like, this is amazing, like, it's coming alive, the things that we all want to do is coming alive here, and it's because we all care for each other, like, you're, you're working together. I don't know, I mean, I think we have phone calls coming up, but just up here alone, there were four emails directly from that day of connections, people saying, hey, we have a resource, we realize that Kiwanee County is, is a desert with a lot of like United Ways, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, things that other counties have that it seems to be missing in Kiwanee County, so they're going to speak up and advocate for us. So regardless of this demonstration site, the connections made are really important.
Hi, Dave. So you have been missing the Friday update of the visit, correct?
Uh, just the, just about the last thirty seconds.
Oh, wonderful.
Oh, good.
Okay, good, all right.
I mean, I just, I guess, Dave, I was wrapping up just to say that, I mean, regardless of a demonstration site or whatever that looks like, I, the connections that were made with these people and what they saw and how they will be advocates for us and for our youth and families and community members is priceless. And I, and I can't stress that enough, that, just to, I have pictures of us being in the dream lounge, and I, we pulled together as many staff and students as we can, of course, not everybody can get this experience, but to sit back and watch our youth and staff connect with these individuals, that's, that's priceless, and it's invaluable, because they get to share the great work that they're doing. So I guess at the end of the day, that's, it was a very great day and so well worth all of that.
The piece is also that they are fully aware of the logistics and the practical implementation of the demonstration function. So this, this is not like they're saying, oh, we want to fund both tech drills. This is six months in the making of them knowing exactly what that means. It's not just five hundred dollars for PAT and four hundred dollars or more, it's, in order to be a demonstration hub on a national level, obviously, there are, there's a lot of human capital that goes into that, and who's funding that, and who's paying for that, and how all of that happens, but also there's tremendous amount of resources, right? So by no means does the algoma in this school district, you know, profess that we know everything, so we need to have partners, and we learn all the time from our partners, and that's, that's the Win Network. So we talk a lot about, actually, one of the people when they were in tech ed talked about, how do you communicate all this stuff to your community? And we said it's one of our biggest challenges. But the beauty of the Win Network is you have US News and World in port, you have community initiatives, you have, those are national organizations, that's all they do. So those are the partners that you are getting from a communication, resources standpoint, but then there's also this piece of how do you fund something so that it's sustainable, right? Because the reality of it is, you, you don't have any of that if you don't have the right people doing the right work. So this was not a visit on Friday of cheerleading and hoping for money, this is more of them coming here and putting the dot on the i and then crossing the t, and tomorrow we have a meeting just to, to go through that, because now they've seen it, now they all feel it, now it has to be, you know, put into action. So I think we've learned that along the line, we've done a lot of tours, and we've done a lot of things, and that's a lot, large part of your leadership as a school board, like, we have to put our foot in the ground too, and say, this is what we're doing, this is what it's worth, and, so I think we've been rather strategic on who's at the table, certainly shared some things before the board meeting, but there are other people that are, you know, they may not have been Friday, but they're keenly aware of what is happening, and they certainly, certainly could be an element of it, but it will be a new, it'll be a new era, and how that all plays out will be interesting, because I don't know about demonstration, how the, and education around here, so I think, again, going back to the doing what matters kind of stuff, I think that's a feather on our tab, right, where people from all over the country will come here and learn from us. Pretty amazing.
I was just going to add, I think what comforts me in all of this is just that the people that are at the table, not all of them, but really key stakeholders, it, these are not people that we've had new relationships with. So they know that we don't, I mean, we have never in any single one of these initiatives been like, let's, let's shake, you give us this amount of money, and then we're going to do this for you. That is not how we roll, that is not how we ever did this work, and that will, that's not how we're going to do things in the future. Like, we are going to, if we're going to do something, we're going to do it because everybody brings peace to the puzzle, like Joan sitting next to me, which is going to be a good transition. I mean, we have to work together and value what each other can bring, and, and they know that about us, like, these are not new players. So that comforts me, knowing that we're definitely going to, you know, it will take a long time to work up a plan, but it's going to be something that will be valuable for, for all that are involved, I think, so.
And one, and one thing that we have to always keep in mind is we can't let our district sort of get lost in this, that, you know, our needs, what we're doing, what our district wants to accomplish is always going to be the top priority, and how we, how some of that benefits other people, scale and spread, that's great, and how we get resources to assist us in that, that's wonderful, but we can't just let other people try and pull us apart piece by piece and lose what we have.
That's going to be our, that will forever be our biggest challenge and benefit and to keep the balance, right? Because we know that if we don't engage in those things, we become isolated as a community, and we know what social isolation can do to a school, to an individual, to a community that lacks resources, and we also know what it can do when we see the bright new shiny object and we chase all of our tail feathers that way and forget what we're really here for. So it's got to be a very nice dance, and that's going to be hard to balance, I mean, it has been and it will be, so.
All right, Joan.
Okay, well, you have, and Dave, I have to apologize, I'm a little slow on the uptake and getting paperwork to Teal, so she handed you today, and the rest of you have a report that I prepared, and there are a few errors, and just to tell you, this is kind of one of those things I did this afternoon as I was doing grading, wonderful time. The top, so what I have is the conclusions from the eighteen, nineteen assessments, and for the Wolf Den, okay? So what we wanted to do this year is, we wanted to highlight the differences between the programs, and I, last year, I think I gave you numbers, and frankly, it's really hard to tell what the numbers mean, because they don't give us, one of the things in using the SABR's scale, which is embedded in the academic testing, is that we don't see an item by item is that we don't see an item by item analysis, we see the subscales. So we see the, so the, the,
Social?
The, I was going to say total score and the subscales of social, emotional and academic. So we only get to see the scores, we don't see each item. And I think an item by item analysis would be great in saying where can we tailor some of what we're doing. But, so instead of giving you those numbers, and I have some of them, I, I just did a statistical analysis and thought I would share that with you. It may not make a lot of sense because statistics never does. But there are two phrases on this page. And these are all students, by the way, it's not just the ones that the students scored. That wasn't, that's inaccurate. Because I was able to look at, typically I can't compare the K to two, K one, two, to the three and over because of who does the scales. But when you're comparing the pre and the post, yes, you can. And so that's what it is, is the pre to the post and are, was there a significant difference? So the top half talks about those that participated in any programming that is offered through the Wolf Den. So was the Wolf, the Den, the Pup, we did the Wolves and the Pups this year, the Mentors and the Mentees, as well as then the Wolf Den program. And there was a statistically significant growth. And I'm going to say growth because they were medium to large effect size, which tells you that it wasn't just by fluke. There is a definite change that occurred in the areas of the total scores altogether, in the social scores, in the academic and the emotional. So academic and emotional, which is, emotional is one of the focuses of Wolf Den. That was one of them with a, that was the one with the greatest effect size, which tells you that the intervention worked the most. So that's what, that's what that kind of thing, but there was statement underneath that says that there's a statistically significant difference in total social, emotional and academic scales for those that are participating in the programming. And the most significant difference was for academic with the large effect size, academic and emotional. See, I'm missing a phrase in there too. But, and the remaining were medium. So it really, those two areas, which are important. When I look at the scores, there may be a difference of only one point between fall and spring in order to determine what that is. And so we, because we can't see the items, it's hard for us to tell that without having the machine because this is done by a machine, don't even put the data, and it comes out. So that was a very positive one. And then if we compare it with all students, even those that were not in programming. And I tell this because I think there's a climate in this school that when, what Teal is talking about of how it matters, there are, there's a heck of a lot going on that is not the Wolf Den program. But even in the overall school altogether, there's a significant difference in the academic and the emotional scores. So you're paying attention to what, to what matters in those areas of, of improving children's wellbeing in the, in the general school as well. So that was kind of, it's kind of, it was like, "Oh, look at, this does make a difference." Because when we first, I presented it to the students two months ago already, was it? And I gave them the numbers, right? And so we're talking about it and it was kind of,
But yeah, numbers can just sort of make persons eyes glaze over.
Yeah, and it was, it's a grid of all of these, you can hardly fit it, fit it on a page. But this two sentence thing tells us that we're being effective, very effective. And I'm seeing it in the Wolves themselves because their scores were significant for social development as well as with the, the Dents and those that were Pup and Den were also even academically. Now, there's not a lot of numbers because when you write, so if I were to say this is for everybody, I would say nobody in Algoona, in our students, this is what's working.
Now, when you say all students, does that include Pathfinder?
Everyone, yes.
And, and parochial schools.
Actually, no, I cut the parochial. Because I can't, there's a,
That's right.
They haven't been, there's not enough of them to do some analysis. So I haven't been including them in this analysis, not that it's not done. I just don't include it in this analysis. So this is the public schools at this point. And there were four hundred and eight students in this.
Study. Dave, did you have a question?
No, I did not.
Okay. Alright, well that's excellent. I actually appreciate the fact that it is just the public schools because that's what we have control and an impact over, so. Excellent.
They're, they're given the, they're allowed to, or if they want to participate, and one school did not this year, to take it and at least get their student by student results. And that can be helpful for them. And if they do need programming from Wolf Den after school, we could involve them in it. I don't think there is any at this point, but.
Nobody has the, never, no, none of the students have ever been played on their assessment to meet those services.
And I can also tell you, say, every school is starting some sort of after school initiative right now in their school system. So whether they've seen this and think, "Oh, this is a good idea," I'm not sure. But it's kind of for those, I think, latchkey kids that are not, they're home alone or they're, one of the things that I'm going to, it's just a, a thing that happened on Friday. When I was sitting, talking to a woman at the end, we ended up at, at the Wolf Den at the last place. And she's talking to me and she said, "Well, how do you screen them?" And so I'm going through some of, you know, how they get identified. And then she said, "Okay, so you consider about how many?" I said, "Well, don't count me, I think there's about thirty." I can never remember numbers. And so she said, "Oh, okay, so what do you do for the other kids? What, how do you determine how many are in this after school program and the other after school programs?" And I told her, "There is no after school programs other than this." And she was like, "Wow." Because it, you know, in the, in, having worked in this rural county and a rural county as well, they don't realize how rich they are for resources compared to small communities where you don't have that and it takes creativity and it takes, you know, going outside the box to get the needs of your people back. So I think that, I think that was one of the things that I got in talking to different people throughout, as well as the commendation for students on their professionalism. And when they presented themselves, we did the initial, we went to the library rooms and Alana did her presentation. And she did it so well, you could not tell she was a student. If, you know, she later said, "Well, yeah, I'm a student." But they thought she was one of the professionals because they're so used to hearing from the professionals and not the students. But she was just so poised and the language used.
Like this is my, I only have one lens to look through, so I need to bring other stakeholders to the table. Like I was just like,
Yeah, and she was just, it was, you would not have known she was a student in most, and I can tell you many of the college level students that I meet with don't have some of that poise in the way they interact professionally. So I, and that's just a, just, when someone talked to me about it, but it was my own observation as well in going through the room. I learned a lot that day. So it's very fun for me to sit and be apart and hang Teal for my needs. That's all I have. Sorry it takes so long to get this, it will be faster next year because I keep doing these, I'm really worried, database pieces of things that won't, that I think I've not mastered.
Well, you know, I think as, as we view the state report card, we don't need to necessarily have numbers to see and feel and, and know the results of the things that we're doing. But something like this where we can actually prove and statistically have it on paper is always just wonderful to be able to see. It's not like we're like, "Oh, we are doing something." I mean,
Yeah, it gives a multi-dimensional view of our student population more than just the, what's the score at the end of the test. And that's important.
Well, I hope what it does, this might be a tread lightly here, but I hope what it does for people that have made comments that what we're doing is not the school's responsibility, that our responsibility is academic only. I hope that this shows a little light that when we think about things different and what our kids need, that academics can follow that and will follow that. But some things need to be addressed first. So, and I would also, just as looking, looking at those tests and some of the policy studying that I've done, is they don't account for areas where there is a lot of poverty, where there's a lot of racial diversity. If you were to look at the school report cards, the ones that fail are those in high areas of poverty. And I would also say children of color because Milwaukee, they all fail. And why, you know, it's not, it's not that you don't have good teachers, it's that the resources the teachers are able to have or that the stuff outside of the school so much influences how a child functions that I think, yeah, I was reading all the newspaper articles about all of these other schools and I'm looking like, "Okay, the socioeconomic status of that district is here." And I know that just from some of my studies academically. But it's something that I think people who don't tune into some of that may not think of it that way.
But for policy, you'll often find both broad and narrow interpretation of what is education. If you don't take a broader view of it, you miss out all of the socioeconomic features that affect learning. And that's, that's important and that's why I think having more than just a single scorecard is really important. You know, if we can get even more of that.
Well, they are this year, we're going to have another one that the students are doing every, and I will be able to do the same stuff with their data day. Because this is a point in time, right? You take it one time, they've got some ongoing data that we'll be able to look at.
I mean, if I could find a manual dexterity, someone who's able to carve a kind of score, who are we sending off to dental school, you know, just.
I was thinking a plumber, we need to get a plumber involved because we're going to be running out of plumbers in a while.
Well, and, and your comment about the failing schools and the report card and that kind of thing, that report, I mean, the test itself is just not tailored for those schools, ours included. It doesn't mean that there aren't super successful students within them. Just because it says it's a failing or a needs work or it meets expectations versus exceeds expectations the year before. It has not, when it isn't the right tool to measure, it is not showing all the positive success. And then it has this fail brand on it, which is just so wrong. So again, that's why we're trying to rectify that, so. Alright. Anything else, comments?
Just, just an old saying, if your only tool in your toolbox is a hammer, the whole world looks like a nail.
I like that. Okay. Building and grounds committee meeting.
Yes, we have, we, last weekend, we prioritized the McKinsey report. And we're going to ask the board tonight to approve how we prioritized it. We'd like to do the boiler and the digital controls first. And then the high priority roofs. For both of them, the boiler, Jason says we have the money in the, in the bank. And for the roofs, we got a good amount of money in the bank. So that's a very, very positive thing to have these days. And the window replacements, we figure will fit into the budget. And then as, earlier we want to look at is renewable energy. We looked at solar, Jason was to look at wind a little bit. Anybody who was ever in Easttown Mall, they had the wind towers that didn't take up a lot of room in height, that were working fairly good. So tonight we're going to ask you to do that. And then we also talked about the use of utilizing coal tar and we do not do that. So we're already meeting our standards there. Anybody's got any questions on that? Joan has a better understanding of the position.
Right, that was, that was, that was going from a, a practice to put it into policy to make sure that, that, that goes beyond any of us on the board or in administration at this point. And that's,
We're, we're meeting it now, so it's nothing I guess we have to worry about. We're going to ask you tonight in action to accept that prioritization. And then Jason's going to go off for bids on the boilers, which by the way, will probably be somewhere in the area of eight hundred thousand dollars. It's not a small, well, undertaking by no means. With about a fifteen year payback, which is fairly decent.
Yeah, actually, that's a, that's a very reasonable payback. And obviously it's a very necessary expenditure.
Jason, what did you say, the, the difference in the heating bills between this building and the, and the, on Fremont Street? What was the?
Well, I mean, your reports saw to that, but just last month, giving example, was nine hundred at the elementary school and fifty-six hundred up here.
Wow.
And the building size is only a little less than ten thousand square feet difference, so.
Okay, continue Dave.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't a real hard decision.
Do you have anything else, Dave?
That would be the expenses of our meeting.
Okay, alright. Any questions for Dave?
That will be a motion that Dave makes during the action period to accept those.
Okay. Other specific items for discussion, we have school resource officer memorandum of understanding draft.
Yeah, I just want to emphasize draft, 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 draft. So Chief Remicker gave me this, it's something that they would like to pilot and try to understand how we might go about this. Again, I'll say draft. I think there's one entity that's, you know, trying to look at a school resource officer full year basis and numbers, you know, upwards of forty thousand dollars have been thrown around. So I think we have, we have, I guess, an opportunity is the way I would put it is to take the next semester and try some things out. So the piece that, the pieces that are outlined in there would be, you know, the costs of an officer. And maybe officer would be, which I think the school district has always been steadfast in wanting that to be as close to one as possible because we need things like consistency. Somebody that kids identify with has a good rapport with our students. I don't necessarily know that that's ironed out yet. I think they have, you know, probably three officers that have interest in that. But this pilot would be actually outside of their normal working hours. So if they have a shift for eight hours, this would be after those hours. It would not be, for instance, a school resource officer comes on a half day basis or what have you. I, I just feel that is a, that's going a little too far. I, I just don't see, nor do we have the need for somebody to be spending twenty hours a week in our buildings. I think we've benefited greatly when we've had officers in and out of our buildings all the time. And I think that's what this kind of draft is getting at is maybe a more formal approach to that where they can schedule things. Because what happens now, I think, is you could go, you could have nothing or you could have somebody stopping two, three times a week. This is a more formalized approach to, we said, two hours on these three days versus what's happening now where it's just if it's possible, right? So it's just a draft, I mean, he's looking for feedback on it.
And it is the six month period, so it is definitely a trial.
All of next year, it's from January one to June, June two, so.
So essentially what this is, is a six month proof of concept.
Yeah, try things, doesn't work, is two hours, three times a week enough? Is it too much? Is it, you know, I think there's also an illness, which I understand from the city's perspective is that, you know, if they bring a new officer, from the city's perspective, is that, you know, if they bring a new officer on, there's needs to be some level of training and interchangeability, and, you know, because things happen, which I understand. But I also, I really want to remain steadfast on that, because, just like on Friday, when we have an officer at Wolf Den, we're talking about that, that means a lot, right? Accountability, it's consistent, and it's a relationship. And I think, read anything about this stuff, it's the relationship, I can't stress it enough, it's the relationship, 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 relationship every time. It's not the ability to enforce something. So, yeah, that's kind of where it's at, so I would think if, if you have any concerns on it, or you want to look into something further, I think now's the time for me to, to hear that, and then I'd just certainly bring it back to the chief and say, here's, here's my direction.
Well, I, I like the fact that the school district should have the right to request replacement. I mean, we have to maintain that control, but it, I mean, there's, obviously, a legal document gets into so many different things, but it seems like.
He didn't tell me that this is not going through the city legal statute, so I'm deciding it's draft, draft, draft. So if there are concerns about things, I think we just, these are our concerns.
I think.
Well, the thing that I had, right, in the first one, it says, subject to availability. So does that mean they're coming? Does that mean they're not coming? Only availability, that, that leaves it wide open.
I think what they're getting at there is, I think they have some restrictions with unions and how they go about things. I don't wanna speak for anybody, but I think this is their attempt to add it to somebody's vision. So when an officer is available after their shift or before their shift, they would be willing to take it on. So if on Monday, I'm gonna work eight hours, but I can add two hours after my shift, that's, that's how I view that, that's the intent. It's not to say the school district's on the hook for these two hours regardless of somebody showing up or.
Right, right. Which means you could get an officer on Monday, and you can get a different one on Wednesday.
Right.
So there's no constant, you know, to build that relationship with, if you're seeing.
Yeah.
So that's what we, that's one of the things that will be discussed as.
But we don't have that many officers.
Right.
It's not like it's a force of twenty or thirty.
Right. But I, you know, I, they're gonna have to have two, right, two that are trained, because there's parts of that, too, and I was very, with Chief Remicker, there, I mean, we, that's current practice now, where there are certain things that knowing who's on and who's not impacts our decisions as a school district. That's just me being transparent, that's reality, right? Because we all have certain skill sets, we all know, eh, maybe that's not the best match, right? And it's not a knock on anybody, it's just, that's reality. So I, I think they understand that as well. So, yeah, I also understand that they have, you know, they're gonna get new officers, right? And they're gonna have to be able to train them up and at least bring them into this environment so that should something happen, God forbid, right? We don't know who might be on duty on a Tuesday or a Thursday, and it might not be your appointed SRO. I get the training, but I also want to be as consistent as possible. And I think they understand that.
Madam President?
Yes.
I have some definite concerns on this whole thing. First of all, I think the sixty dollars an hour is ridiculous, and that money could be spent. I listened to a program this morning on Public TV by David Perine. He's been studying this for the last fifteen to twenty years. The, the university represents, Nick, can you pronounce that? I can't pronounce the university.
Oh, Vatibro, Vatibro?
The Turbo.
The Turbo?
Yeah. He, he comes from that university. There is no, no solid evidence that where you have a police officer in school, you gotta let, for more percentage of police shootings. And he feels that this money would be much more well-spent working with students when they're young, like we have been doing, Tylan Kenny's been doing with all of them, and programs like that. Second, I think continuity in the officer that you, that you get is very important, and the way I read this, the police chief in Alton, could, we could have one officer one day, and the different officer next day, the third day, we could have the, a fourth different officer. And another concern I got is, this is the city employees, so the rural people have absolutely no representation on, on who is hired and how it's handled. And that came up a few years ago, I can't remember the police chief, but he went to Alton, if anybody can remember his name.
Cheney.
Did you think of it since I talked to you?
Yeah, Officer Cheney.
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 If you remember, we went, went through that with, with him, and he disagreed with me, but I respected him, and I respected my right to disagree with him. And if we're gonna do this, I think as a voter from the rural district, I want somebody that I have a say so on, too.
I think that's a very valid point, Dave.
Yeah, I'm gonna stand up for that, and right now, I just think we should table this.
Well, I think what Nick did say is this a draft, draft, draft. The idea of just putting our foot in the water, the idea of just having a few times or hours a week versus, and in a six-month period, was sort of understanding the same kind of feeling that you're saying, Dave, that we don't necessarily feel we have to jump in and, and have a officer from anywhere, you know, here. So I think it was sort of an idea of, is this something that is beneficial to us? Is it, and if we don't feel it is, at the end of six months, we wouldn't continue. I think.
I can't, I can't see spending sixty dollars an hour for that man or woman to, to study a program that we're not sure of. If they were to come across with a reasonable price per hour, I might be more open, but I think the sixty dollars per hour is ridiculous.
Well, I think that's certainly a point that can be addressed in this draft. And the idea that you said, having somebody that represents rural as well, is a.
The way you could do that, if, if you're gonna do that, then that police officer should be coming from the county, then the people of the country and the city are both represented.
I, I keep thinking back to that report I had last month about the Secret Service, and, you know, the, the, most of the schools had a, a resource officer in school that had the, you know, the shootings. And I keep remembering, their recommendations was to be proactive on this and, and build those relationships with those kids that maybe need the mental health services, don't have the best home life, which is exactly what we're hiring Amanda to do, and the Wolf Den is part of that. And I also think that once you implement something, it's hard to get rid of it. So we, we come down, you know, come down six months, you know, we don't think we want that. And it's just, once you, once you have something, it's hard to say, no, we don't want it anymore.
Well, there's one other thing that I noticed on here, and I think people are maybe looking at this a little differently, because, you know, if you have what they call a school resource officer, you know, you got school shootings and all, all that, and they're thinking that that's gonna be a deterrent for that, but it says right here, the officer's primary responsibility is not to provide school security.
I agree with you, Nick. If they wanna do that, that's what they're getting paid to do right now, build a relationship. What would be wrong with them stopping in once in a while and just talking to these students? It's part of their job.
Well, and I think, I think Nick was saying that we do have that, but that the idea of trying to make it a little more formal would allow sort of a planned time if there was an educational purpose or something like that, isn't that? That's sort of my understanding, but it sounds to me like everybody's feeling like this needs to be considered carefully and.
Yes.
And looked at in more detail before we make any decisions.
The DPI has a model for an agreement like this. I pulled it off before he came, and maybe we could, if we're gonna do this, maybe we could incorporate, maybe, I realize this is probably for a full-time police officer, and we're probably trying to do pilot something that's completely different, and, but maybe there are some things that we could, we could learn from that if we decide to put that in our agreement, so.
Okay, well, we've given you a lot of information, Nick.
Should this go to the safety committee first?
I don't think that, I think if we decide to move forward, then maybe there can be, I mean, I think at this point, it's still very much, was this, were we approached by them, or did we approach them to get this initial?
They sent this to me after.
Okay, okay, so, yeah. Yeah, I think ultimately, if, so, I think we brought up some very good points that we can move forward to investigate further, and then maybe if it looks like we want to get a little more detailed about it, then maybe we can have a safety committee.
I would recommend looking at the DPI boilerplate.
Yep.
To see how, see if it matches up.
Yep. Okay. All right, yeah, thank you for your input. All right, we're gonna move on to action items. I need a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of November eighteenth, 2019, and the building and grounds committee meeting of December fifth, 2019.
So move.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the bills that were presented to us in our packet, as well as those tonight.
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Pat, seconded by Ann. Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the McKinstry priority list as recommended by building and grounds committee.
So move.
I'll second. I thought Dave was gonna take it.
I have a motion and a second. Questions or discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a mo, a motion to approve the middle high, middle school, high school, school safety plan.
I'll move.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. I am going to mention that it's going to include the edits.
Yep.
To keep it current. I assume that is fine for the motion and the second.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I need a motion to approve the elementary school safety plan.
So move.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Request for future agenda items. All right, I'll move on. I need a motion to go into executive session under Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight-five, subsection one C E F N I, for the purpose of personal matters, hires, staffing, resignations, and administrator evaluation.
So move.
I have a motion, do I hear a second? Second by Ann. Roll call vote, Dave.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes.
Ann?
Yes. Pat?
Yes.